All right. Well, good evening. We'll go ahead and call this to order our regular meeting for August 1st. I'll go ahead and call for a roll call, please.
Chairman Christopher Sipple.
Present.
Vice Chairman Brian Anderson. Commissioner Carl Bloomfield.
Here.
Commissioner David Caveney.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Froelich.
Here.
Commissioner Brian Johns.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Seth Banda.
Here.
And alternate Commissioner Daniel Subuentes.
I appreciate Commissioner Banda's zeal for being here this evening. With that, we'll go ahead and move to item number seven, which is approval of the agenda. Did we have any yellow forms before we make a final approval of the agenda for item number 12? Let's check this out here. Amy, are those all for 14? Yeah, okay. All right. So, we're gonna go ahead and... Yep, thank you. Move to...we'll have number 12 go on the consent. All right. So, can I get our approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda. Moving item number 12 from non-consent to the consent agenda. And then continuing items number...item number 13, Z18-15, to the September 5th agenda. And item 16, UP18-07, to the September 5th agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
First by Commissioner Ailer or Vice Chair Ailer this evening, a second by Commissioner Caveney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to item number eight. This is the communication from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town of Gilbert, but not on our agenda this evening. Commissioners, response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda item. Is there anyone here wanting to speak on an item not on our agenda? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move on to our public hearing consent. We're gonna actually have two motions this evening. We've got a conflict on a couple of items. So, our consent this evening is item 9, DR18-95, New Women's and Children's Tower, DR18-29, Mercy Medical Commons, DR1839, Melody Industrial Building, and Z18-7, Greenfield Lakes Neighborhood Commercial. I'll call for a motion.
I'm gonna declare conflicts on item number 10 and number 12.
Okay. We'll go ahead and do two separate motions. Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the consent agenda with these...this portion of the consent agenda.
Second.
Which items?
Items 9, 11.
I guess it's just 9 and 11?
Yeah, just 9 and 11.
Okay. Motion's made to approve items number 9 and 11 on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Caveney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention.
So, I'd like to make a motion on the second portion of the consent agenda, which would be items 10 and 12.
Okay. There's a second on items number 10, which is DR18-29, and number 12, Z18-07. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Vice Chair Adler and vice...and second by Commissioner Caveney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries? Yes? Okay. All right. We'll move on to the public hearing non-consent item. Non-consent public hearing items, we heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the Board of Commissioners in a separate motion. This evening's non-consent items are item number 14 and item number 15. Are we good?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the two items that you are continuing, you do need to take a motion for each of those.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, I'll go ahead and call for a motion to continue item number...can I do them in the same motion since they're going to the same...okay. Motion...I'll call for a motion on item number 13 and 16 to continue to the September 5th.
Uh...
Second.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay. I'll make the motion, yeah. Motion's made by Chairman Sipple, second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good? All right. We'll move on to item number 14. This is AP18-02, Hare Secondary Dwelling Unit. This is an appeal to the Gilbert Planning Commission for the town of Gilbert zoning administrator's approval. And Stephanie, good evening again.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. So, this is Appeal 18-02 for the Hare Secondary Dwelling, which is an appeal of an administrative use permit to allow a secondary dwelling in the single-family SF43 zoning district. So, this is a location on the site. The smaller map in the area shows a zoomed-out version. So, this is located southwest of the southwest corner of Lindsay and Ray Road in a neighborhood that is larger lot, large acre size lots that are all single-family 43, larger lot zoning. This is located along 1839 South 142nd Street. So, currently, the property has a primary dwelling, a pool, an accessory structure that is also mentioned as a cabana, and there is also an accessory garage on the property. So, to give a little timeline of events, the subject site was annexed into the town in 2007. That southwest corner of Lindsay and Ray was annexed in chunks in 2006 and 2007. So, when it was annexed, that house, pool, and cabana were already existing on the property. In 2015, a building permit was approved in the town for that accessory garage that's on the northeast corner of the site. And in March of 2018, the owner applied for an administrative use permit for a secondary dwelling on the property, which is allowed in our code if the administrative use permit is approved. So, that was decided of approval. So, the notice of decision was sent out in Ju...on June 11th of 2018. On that same day, the...an appellant, which is Matt Dawson, so the Hare property owner of the subject site, and the appellant are both here tonight, which will be able to speak after my presentation. So, the appellant appealed the approval of AUP1808 by the zoning administrator on the same day. And when the zoning administrator is appealed, it goes to the planning commission. So, that is why it is seen before you tonight. And then, just to note that if it does end up getting appealed, it would not go to the town council, it would go to the district courts. So, for part of the approval for the secondary dwelling, we do have additional regulations for secondary dwelling units in the LDC under 2.106 dot dash D, as in David. So, I just kind of went over a breakdown of all of those regulations to see if this is complying or not for the subject site. So, one, it is complying because it was constructed after the primary structure, as it is already there. For number two, it is also complying because it's the only request for a secondary dwelling unit on the property for the location. It must be located within the building envelope with a primary dwelling, so that is complying as you'll see on the site plan. And 3B is not applicable because it is not part of a detached garage. For the additional standards under four, for A, it is complying because the secondary dwelling entrance is not going to be seen from the street. There is a chain-link fence around a large portion of the site, but as part of the improvements of the site, the property owner is also proposing to install an eight-foot block wall around the entire portion of the property where it's not already applied. For B, the secondary dwelling shall use the utility service provided to the principal dwelling. This is a requirement so that in the future, a lot that has a secondary dwelling cannot be split and become two separate lots. There is also an inability to do that on this site because it would not be following the zoning regulations for the SF43 minimum lot size for the zoning district. So, we do have the water coming from the primary dwelling, from the water main, which we'll see on the site plan, I'll point it out. And there is also an SRP panel on the north of the property of the house. SRP is requiring that panel to be upgraded to be able to have enough power for both of the buildings. And because of SRP regulation, since it is currently located under a carport that is non-conforming to SRP, so it does have to be relocated outside of that carport, but it will still be that service connecting to the secondary dwelling. On this site, there is a septic tank for the primary structure. Those are under Maricopa County regulations, and it has been assessed that that septic tank will not be able to carry the amount for the second house. So, there is a proposal for an additional septic tank on the southeast corner of the property. So, I'll point that out as well. For D, the secondary dwelling shall not have internal access to the principal dwelling, so that's complying because they are not connected in any way. Rentals of secondary dwellings are permitted, and that is a regulation that is permitted in the code that any secondary dwelling that comes onto a property does have the ability to be a rental in the future. A full kitchen is permitted in a secondary dwelling, and the design must be compatible with the design of the principal dwelling in materials, colors, and architectural style. So, we have determined that that complies as well, so we have a little picture to show you on that. So, this is the site plan. To kind of break it up, this is the existing building with the septic tank and the pool, cabana. This is where the proposed secondary dwelling is proposed. This dashed line shows the building envelope for SF43, which is 40 feet from the front and rear setbacks and 30 feet from the sides. This is the existing garage that was permitted in 2015, and this purple clouded area is the proposal for the additional septic tank. Electric is coming from this area in green, and the city water is coming from the area, I guess, in a dark brown color. And then, as I mentioned, they are proposing to add a eight-foot CMU block fence around the perimeter of the site. Something to also note on this site, on the north portion of the property, there is a 20-foot easement for ingress and egress. I'm gonna go to this area to show you. So, that is the south half of a 40-foot easement that allows ingress and egress to these two lots on the rear to allow access onto 142nd Street, otherwise, they would be landlocked. So, that 20 feet is still outside of the fence area and the location of the secondary dwelling. These are elevations of what the secondary dwelling is proposed to look like, so it is one-story. It is proposed to have a basement underneath the prop...underneath the building, and it does have a two-car garage, two awnings. When all of that is put together, it's a three-bedroom, 1.5 bath. The basement does have a one-bedroom and one bathroom at the bottom, so the total of the first-floor living square feet is a little over 2,700 square feet. Adding the garage and the two patios makes it at 3,520 square feet. So, that is still under the maximum lot coverage with all of those buildings that are on the site, so their maximum lot coverage is 30%, and they are at 15.2%. For the elevations, we also have this picture that shows the primary dwelling, and the secondary dwelling will be using the same siding and the brick material on the...around the perimeter of the all sides of the elevation. For the administrative use permit, there must have been four findings of fact that would have to be met so that the proposed use will not be detrimental to health, safety, or general welfare of persons living or working in the vicinity to adjacent property to the neighborhood or to the public in general. The proposed use conforms to the purposes, intent, and policies of the general plan and its policies in any applicable area, neighborhood, or other plan adopted by the town council. The proposed use conforms to the conditions, requirements, or standards required by the zoning code and any other applicable local, state, or federal requirements. And the proposed use, as conditioned, would not unreasonably interfere with the use and enjoyment of nearby properties. So, when the appellant did appeal, there was also a grounds of appeal, so I have listed here what the appeal reasons were, which one was the lot percentage, that it didn't seem that it was equaling out to 15.2%. And the proposed site plan has not been professionally surveyed, devaluation of neighboring properties as they are over one or over an acre pieces. The property presents itself for future residential rental proper possibilities, which is permitted in the code, and increased traffic on the easement given for the ingress and egress for the residents on the back acreage lot. So, in the staff report, there were responses from staff on each of those grounds of appeal. And then, for citizen concern, so there have been a lot of citizen input from surrounding neighbors, some that are in favor and some that are not in favor. The major points of citizen and appellant opposition I listed here is mainly the size of the secondary dwelling unit. The code does not have a maximum size of what the unit can be. The only way to limit the size is the lot coverage. The ability of the secondary dwelling unit to be rented out in the future, again, as I've mentioned, that is permitted in the code. There's also ability for properties to rent out the primary structure as well. The maximum lot coverage, the use of the private drive easement, and the utility services being separate from the primary dwelling during...if this were to be approved during the building code and inspection phase is when that utility services would be verified through site plan review and then inspection approval to see that the utility services are coming from the principal dwelling. This site does have the accessory garage has a separate utility service, and I'll show you on a map where that's coming from, but that is permitted to have a separate utility service. The secondary dwelling still has to be connected to the principal dwelling. And then, the possibility of a lot split in the future, which I've already gone over, would not be possible. So, staff does recommend that the planning commission move to uphold the zoning administrator's approval of AUP18-08 and make the findings a fact for the site at 1839 South 142nd Street. And these were the four conditions that were part of the administrative use permit so that you can look at those, so that the lap siding and brick would be similar in design to the architectural style was the main extra condition in there. And then, to go back on the electricity that is connected to the accessory garage, there is a power pole at this area of the site that has electricity going to the garage, but as I mentioned, the electricity to the secondary dwelling that will be in this area has to come from the principal dwelling. So, if you have any questions for me, I can address them, or we can have the applicant and the appellant come up as well.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. A couple of questions for our town attorney as we move into this. The applicant, at this point, is supposed to make their presentation. So, the applicant, at this point, is supposed to make their presentation, but is the town the applicant, or is the Hare family the applicant on this?
It's the appellant, so the Hare... So, the...the...technically, the person presenting would be the appellant, so the person opposing it from being approved, if that's making any sense.
Okay. And...yeah, so, the person who applied for the appeal...
Applied for the appeal, yes.
Is considered the applicant in this...in this piece? Okay. So, I'm assuming that family is here. I've got a yellow...a yellow handful of yellow cards, so then, would it be safe to say, as I treat this process, they'll have their presentation piece in the beginning, then we'll have comments from the public in the middle, they'll have another opportunity to respond, and then we'll go from there. Is that correct? Okay. So, my question for you, Stephanie, is the applicant here?
So, we have the property owner of the applicant administrative use permit is here, and the appellant is here as well.
The appellant is...is the applicant in this case, so I'm gonna ask the appellant to come forward first to provide us their presentation. And so, when you come on up, if you can just give us your name, town of residence, and your reason for submitting the appeal.
Appellate applicant, I'm already confused.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could, please. Good evening. My name is Matthew Dawson. I reside at 1841 South 142nd Street, along with my family. We are to the east of the proposed dwelling site property. We have lived here for nearly 30 years. I have other family members that have lived there even longer. My wife and I purchased this land, and we built our home with the intent and purpose of having a rural lifestyle, horses, livestock, peace and quiet, and acreage property. We have had an unobstructed view for 24 years, and after the appellant, Mr. Hare, moved into his property and had this garage built, as you can see on some of the pictures here, you could put... This now causes an obstruction from my home. I look out my kitchen window, this is what I see. If you could put one other one there. Thank you. This is what I see if I come out of my garage, when I drive down my easement road that we have access to, as well as my neighbors, this is what we have to see. And Mr. Hare now wants to put a very large, over 5,000-square-foot home right next to this garage, and quite frankly, it's ridiculous. It's just gonna make an eyesore even worse. Our neighbors have to see this, and I have to see it, and this is really not what we've are accustomed to. I have a couple of concerns about this. Number one, Mr. Hare says that he wants to build this home for his elderly parents, which I think we can all appreciate, we want to take care of them. However, why do you need a 5,000-plus-square-foot home for two elderly people? It appears that Mr. Hare is gonna move in with his family, along with his elderly parents and any other family members. Family...members of families pass away, marriages end and divorce, people lose their jobs. Hell, you can wake up one morning and say, you know what? I don't want to be in this house anymore. It's too large. I'm gonna sell it. So, you have an investor that buys this property. He's got two very large homes on it, and what is he gonna do? He's gonna rent them out. And there's a very good chance that these are gonna have multiple people in each home. And what does that cause? Neighbor problems. You have loud parties, noise complaints, they're gonna have several friends over, they're gonna park along the easement, police can't enforce any parking, it's private property, it now becomes a civil matter, and this is what causes the neighbor trouble. For over 23 years, I was a police officer, and it was common that we would go into different neighborhoods, various neighborhoods, with people complaining about noise problems, neighbor problems, loud parties, increase in crime, heavy traffic, which almost always leads to drug activity. And what does it point to? It points to people that are renting homes. They have no ties to this home, they have no concerns, they're gonna do what they want. I'm not saying that the Hares are this way, but if they decide to sell, this is what it could lead to. I feel like there's other opportunities to take care of this. First of all, these are single-family home acre lots, not multi-housing. There's no one else in this vicinity that has two homes on one acre. If you want two homes, sell your piece, go out, buy two acres, put two homes on it. Or, build a smaller home, an in-law suite, if you will. Or better yet, why don't you just add on to your home, your existing home, and it makes it better for privacy for all the parties involved. I'm very disappointed and frustrated with the applicant, I'm sorry, Mr. Hare, because he has no concern or care for the neighbors regarding this second dwelling. These are single-family home lots. This is what we all came out here for. I think there's a very good chance that if you allow this, what's gonna stop other people from doing the same thing? And now, we become a subdivision, and it's not what we're out there for. I ask you, all of you, to please seriously consider my neighbors, my family, for the longevity that we've had, the many, many years that we've been there and this lifestyle that we've become accustomed to. And I'm just asking you that you seriously consider this and deny this building permit. Stephanie, did you give them the other letter? Well, I have another...I have a couple of neighbors that weren't able to make it here tonight, but they were able to type a letter, email. One has an email, one has a hard copy of a letter.
Stephanie, do we have hard copies of these?
So, the current one that is all on your podium, we...I did receive that before the meeting. This is one that I received at the meeting just now. So, you have one, this is the second one.
Okay. Did you want to...did you wanna read that in the record? Not you, Stephanie, but...
Oh.
Yeah. Or, did you wanna have us...did you wanna turn that up here into the dais and we can add it with our record? It's completely up to you, sir.
It's however you normally do it. I mean, I can read it if you like, or if you wanna look at it yourself.
I would be okay if we turned it in up here to the dais so we could...we've got a few other people that wanna speak, so we can read it during that time.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
I just wanna make you...excuse me, make you aware of one other thing. This neighbor also presented a fire apparatus code, wanting to know how fire trucks and things like that are gonna be able to turn around. If this second dwelling is completed, how are they gonna be able to get in and out of the property there?
Fair enough. We'll get that answer this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. And you'll actually have another opportunity to speak here shortly.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing, and so, at this point, I've got a few item...a few folks that would like to speak. I'm actually gonna have the Hare family speak first. So, Jason, and is it Laney? Laney, thank you. If you guys wanna come on up, state your name and town of residence. We'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Laney Hare. This is my son, Jason. We have the property in the name of a family trust, so we both own it. The reason that we are here is to address some myths, some outright lies, some falsehoods that have been spread around the neighborhood, and I am so grateful that we're here with the neighbors present, so we can clarify this in front of the council to make certain that we are not lying. We've been accused of lying to neighbors regarding what we're gonna do. First, I know my health is not your concern, but to the point of the reason for the dwelling, I've had multiple heart attacks, have a very small function of my heart left, degenerative disc disease, I've had six back surgeries, four fusions, and unfortunately, I'm going to have to have more. The degenerative disc disease is a continuing problem. That's important because that's the reason why we need the additional dwelling. The unfortunate part is the letter that we sent out was required by town ordinance to include the 3,000-s somewhat square-foot number for the dwelling, when in fact, that's really kinda misrepresentative. That includes the basement, that includes the garage, that includes the patios, the...it is not a 3,000-square-foot home, and I think staff can help us clarify that as well. My son and daughter-in-law have been kind enough to step up to the plate, recognizing that... recognizing that after running from Gilbert to West Phoenix whenever I have health emergencies, that it's best that if we move closer to them, and they've agreed, I admire them for this, love them to death, they've agreed to be of assistance with me as I'm getting more and more debilitated. The home is built with wheelchair access, things of those nature. I currently live in West Phoenix, as I said, and I'm certain that this will help my son probably more than me in responding to the health issues. If I were one of the neighbors, I would be incredibly upset, and I'm glad you're here, because what you've been told is wrong. And frankly, I don't understand where many of these rumors come from, but I'd like to address them because I think if I point these out and show that they're fallacies, fantasies, lies, that I think a lot of people will feel a lot more comfortable with what we're doing here. We tried to talk to residents. My son went over to talk to Mr. Dawson. He wouldn't answer the door. This could have been easily resolved if we could have just talked to people. But we have a group of neighbors who have gone out and stirred the pot. And suddenly, before I've even moved into the neighborhood, I'm a bad guy. And I'll kind of address some of the things that have been falsely accused of. We, one of the things that the neighbors have been repeatedly told is that there's something fishy going on, that there's a conspiracy here, that we're going to rent the property. First, let me address that. The property is in the name of a family trust. I've lived at my current home for 37 years. My son plans on living at his home that long, if not further. One of the reasons that the home is being built in his backyard so close to his house is so that he can see the home, have access to us. If we're out of town, which I have a daughter in Texas we'll spend time with, he'll be able to see the home and be able to take care of it. We have no intention on renting it. I know that that's permissible under the law, just as Mr. Dawson could rent his home to people who are going to have wild parties and drugs and parking. That isn't going to happen. My son has lived there for several years, and we've not had a single incident of that. And if you knew the family, you would find great humor in that. The accusation from a former policeman is offensive. The, part of the concern is that the neighbors that are really upset is that they were told, this is a conspiracy so we can split the lot into two different lots and then sell one, thereby eliminating the one-acre parcels that the neighborhood is, the personality of the neighborhood. As Stephanie has stated, that is not permissible by ordinance. That cannot be done. To tell neighbors that that's one of the plans is, I don't know where that came from. They've, neighbors have been told, and we're not sure where all these originated from, but that we have no intention on moving in, that it's going to be a rental from day one. Let me assure you, that is not the case. And working with the city on the handicap, I think everyone is well aware of that. There is no basis for that. We could go for a different type of dwelling without having to go through this process, but I couldn't have a basement or a full kitchen. Regarding the basement, one of the neighbors said, you tell me why you need a basement. Well, I didn't know I needed to rationalize this to neighbors, but I will. I have no hidden agenda. We have grandkids, and in fact, we have one that will arrive before the end of this month, which will eliminate all of the guest rooms in Jason's house. There will no longer be guest rooms for when his in-laws come in from Duncan to visit, or if my daughter comes in from Houston. This home is going to include a couple of extra bedrooms so that we have a place for guests. We have a large family, and when they come in, we would like for them to be able to sleep in a bedroom rather than on a floor. The reason for the basement, not that it's anyone's business, is that we want to make a large playroom for the kids and storage of antiques that my wife hasn't inherited and we haven't, it's stuff we really don't want to get rid of, so that's going into storage in the basement as well. There's no clandestine plans to turn it into a meth lab. The basement is planned to be a family room, a gathering place for the families on holidays. That's the reason for it. All of the utilities, and this has been a point of irritation to some of the neighbors, as Stephanie explained, the utilities are going to come off of the main home. One of the parties who is so irritated about this was really angry because when he built his home, the city made him bring in new electrical at great expense. And when my son built his garage, he didn't have to. That is the town ordinance. This is, and one of the comments is, well, what's going to prevent them from eliminating the electrical coming from the main house and hook it up to the garage they own? Why would we do that? We're spending a lot of money to have that utility brought over, and there's absolutely no reason why we would have a motivation to do that. And not that it matters to the neighborhood whether I have a meter and he has a meter, it doesn't matter, but we are going to comply with the city code. What happens after we're gone? And it was put to me bluntly that, hey, when you die, they're going to rent it out. Granted, I'm not in great health, but I don't plan on checking out tomorrow either. And trust me, the property is in the family trust name. My son has a large family getting larger every year, and we don't foresee them selling it or renting it out. Now, Mr. Dawson is concerned about the parking on the easement. Let me point out that that, my son has lived there for how long? Five years. Five years. And in that five-year period, we've not had a problem at all. There's concern that we will have parties. My son's lived there for five years. There's not been a party. There's concerns that it will bring drugs into the neighborhood. They may be right there, but it's unfortunately Jaritol and medical drugs for me, nothing of the illegal sort. And to have a policeman say that this would be a den for drugs is insulting because he too could rent his home, and that could be to druggies. We would not want to rent the home, especially since it is wrapped around the back of his house. And when you look out his window in the kitchen, you see the front of the guest house. Who would want a tenant 10 or 15 feet away? We, we could do it legally, as pointed out, but we have no intention on doing that. The neighbors have been riled up to believe that that's what's going to happen. Absolutely untrue. We do have two extra bedrooms. One of the neighbors said, why do you need two extra bedrooms? Well, we do have family, and quite honestly, we may need a full-time caregiver. If that's the case, we would like to have the facility available for a caregiver for my wife and I. Again, there's no great conspiracy here. We're not opening up a bed and breakfast, I assure you. We've had, my son has had experience with me on maintaining rental property. We don't want that. We've been there, done that, bought the T-shirt, and we will not be renting property, especially in our backyard, to someone else. There are, Mr. Dawson said that there are no other homes with secondary or additional dwellings in the neighborhood. If you take a look at the Google map, there are currently nine, let me make sure that I don't speak here, currently nine secondary or guest houses in the two streets surrounding ours. There are nine homes that have secondary or additional residences. It isn't at all true that there are no other homes. If you look at the Google map, it eliminates any question. Again, that's a falsehood. I don't know where that came from. The neighbors have been told, this is going to devalue your property. How? This area is large acreage with cows and horses and barns, and that's what we like about this neighborhood. It is more of a rural area. Now, he showed you pictures of my son's garage. When we look out the kitchen window, he failed to mention that all we see on his property is a horse stall, which I beg to differ with him. I think that a garage is much more attractive than a horse stall and stables. And he has utility trailers and other things parked there as well. So I don't know. He's living in a glass house and should not be throwing rocks. He's concerned about the traffic on the, on the street. First point, that street is an easement. My son owns half of it, but it is an easement that Mr. Dawson is allowed to use. We've never had a problem with allowing him to use that. But additional traffic? My wife put on 8,000 miles on her car last year, and most of that was driving from Phoenix to Gilbert. So there is not going to be an increase in the amount of traffic. Goodness sakes, there are only two other houses that use that road, and it's, it's a decomposed granite. It's not like this is going to be a Speedway. I have no idea what the concern is there. The lot percentage, Stephanie has already covered. We're currently at 15.2, 30% is allowed. That's an invalid concern. It is not a 3,520-square-foot home. I mentioned that earlier. One of the neighbors said, why do you want a two-car garage? Because it's hot, and I want to park my cars, and I don't want parking problems in the neighborhood. I think that's a reasonable request on a secondary dwelling. The footprint on the dwelling is going to be right around 2,000 square feet, and it's going to be hidden by an eight-foot block wall. It will be almost impossible to see. The rumor that we have a hidden conspiracy, I think, is the worst. Another one is that we want to allow somehow to divide the lot so we can have more livestock. We don't have any livestock. We're bringing two dogs, both under 10 pounds. We have nothing against horses and livestock, but we're not going to be bringing in any. And if we did, that's part of what that zoning would allow. We're not increasing the amount of livestock. We have none and plan on keeping it that way. Let's see. I address the utilities. We've had a history. Mr. Dawson's family, whenever my son put up an eight-by-10-foot steel storage shed for a lawnmower, Mr. Dawson's father stopped by and told my son he wanted to see the building permit. And when he explained that anything under 200 square feet, a steel storage shed from Home Depot, didn't need a building permit, that wasn't sufficient. He called to the city of Gilbert, complained, and they had to send someone out. So there is nothing that we can do on the property, apparently, that will not upset Mr. Dawson. I don't understand that. But it will not be an eyesore to the neighborhood compared to many of the structures, chicken coops, horse stalls. This, this dwelling, we're going to estimate is about 250,000, will not be an eyesore. We welcome them to look at the plan. I ask a couple of other issues. The rental permitted, it is by law. We're not going to do it, but if we wanted to, it is permissible, just like Mr. Dawson could. I'm disappointed that he feels that no one in the neighborhood should be able to rent their property. We have no plans on doing so, but being somewhat conservative, I find it difficult to accept that we must live by a different standard than what the law is.
Mr. Hare, if I could jump in. You have new items you'd like to add?
No, sir. I think that pretty well covers my frustration, unless my son would like to add to that.
And he's welcome to. Jason, did you have anything you'd like to add?
I have nothing additional to add. Just like you said, it's a home I'd like to construct for my parents so we can be close, and that's the whole story of it.
Okay. Mr. Hare, real quick, Commissioner Ayler has a quick question for you.
Oh, one of the questions that I wonder, and if you can give us some explanation, is why you cannot add on to the home instead of doing a secondary home?
The primary reason, and there's two real reasons. One is that it's not really positioned now. It's kind of landlocked with a swimming pool and other things. It wouldn't be ideal to add it on and enlarge the house. And the main reason, to be quite honest with you, is I don't want to invade his life. He has a family and a wife. I would like a few yards of distance between us so that we're not in the same household and disturb his family life. I expect his family to get larger. I don't think that having your in-laws living in the same house with you or that close is a good idea. Plus, this will work out better for the use of the property.
How would it be use, better use of the property?
Because currently, all of the land that we're currently going to use is not being used for anything other than lawn. And by placing the property there, it will keep from having to break up swimming pools or move cabanas, or, and it's permissible by code. Why would we want to go to the expense of doing that and eliminating existing structures to accomplish it?
I still, you say that, but I don't understand it. So if you, you could build off to the side of the house and reconstruct the house. I'm just trying to understand the use of having a second. I'm not asking you to tear down your pool or your gazebo or any of that. I'm saying you could build a, a mother-in-law suite, father-in-law, father, and building on to the existing house. I'm trying to understand the difference in that and why the secondary structure is needed in separate from that use, other than that's what you want.
Well, for one, we would be a different household, so it'd be less invasive. And two, there really isn't any room to build on in the back to the existing house unless we eliminate the swimming pool or...
I'm looking at the site plan. It looks like you have room, so I need to explain.
And we have easements on the side that if we were to go out sideways, we would be in violation of those. It would not be permitted.
Yeah, but, so the setback, well, I'll ask staff on the setbacks.
I'm sorry, sir?
I have questions for staff afterwards.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, I know the setbacks.
So we really have no option unless we want to eliminate the pool and the cabana.
Okay. All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so there'll be others that would like to speak as well, so we're going to invite them up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members.
Appreciate it. Ben Melberg says he is opposed to this item, and he wishes to speak. Ben, if you could come on up, just give us your name and town of residence, please.
Ben Melberg in town of Gilbert. So I think a lot of what my concerns were have been brought up. I'm going to kind of go over things.
Thank you. I appreciate you adding new stuff.
Try to summarize and change that a little bit. One thing that I do have, I mean, we were, you were kind of mentioning about having the two separate houses and the locations and positioning for it. We're looking at two primary residences. They're 3,000-square-foot average each. Being that they're separate, my big concern is even though law does not permit it, but having a separate utility going to the opposite side, south side of the property, actually, no, I don't know if I'm looking at directions right, but backside of the property, how difficult would it be to, in the future, non-conforming, connect that separate utility and then create a non-conforming split with the county, which you guys don't have any jurisdiction over? I feel like you're the only entity that could prevent that at this point, but after it's done, is there a way to prevent? That's a question.
Okay.
And one thing that also that I just heard mentioned is we're talking about this is a different household. I understand that, but the, that's adding to the density of the community because it's single-family. The lots are set up as single-family, single, and we're talking about different, which I understand right now we are a single-family, larger family, extended family. But the option of separating it out and then renting it as two primary larger residences, or we're dividing it up into two separate single-family. larger residences are, we're dividing it up into two separate, single-family dwellings. And I think that's it, I mean, the rest of my topics that I had, I've probably had answered.
Ben, I appreciate you condensing yours and adding the new pieces to it. Thank you. The next one is Becky Brendent, Brent? Brandt. If you could come up and name and town of residence, please.
My name is Becky Brandt and I live just across the street. My backyard faces their front yard. I just want to say that my dad has been busy in this community and in Creek Creek for over 30, 40 years. We have been around farmlands, we've been around dealing with people. And one of the most important things about moving out here was the farm life. And what Mr. Hare is describing and attacking, people who are fighting for what they've stood up for all these years, that's something that my dad had taught us long ago. And there's no truth to what Mr. Hare is saying. It's not about him renting the property, it's what happens when he leaves, what happens if they sell it. We have options. They're just choosing to go through the back door, through a code that you have allowed to happen, when we have established a single-home dwelling. The way we solved it, my dad moved out here, what, 30, 40 years ago? My sister bought the property next door, so she has her own property. Guess what? I bought this acreage right next door to him on the other side. My sister, Matt Dawson's wife, they bought the property behind. Never once did we ever consider building on each other's property to accommodate multiple What he did do for his property is he extended and made a master suite for the potential of having his parents move in with him. So, there are options. They want to take care of the parents, let them take care of the parents without disrupting what we have established for so long. And we need to adjust this rule. And yes, there are houses that have extra buildings on them, but they're in-law suites. They're small structures, they're not a full-size home. Those are our concerns, and I think Ben did a nice job with electricity, how are you going to monitor that? Matt's not saying that these guys are drug addicts and they're going to start dealing and renting, that's not the issue. The issue is, what are we here in Gilbert? Gilbert has lost its way on so many different levels. And I've been a teacher in this community for over 30 years, and I've watched it grow. And one thing that we have fought for is maintaining the integrity of this community. They're saying they moved out here for the farm life. And he's complaining because he sees horse stalls? And to solve that issue, he wants to build an eight-foot fence to isolate him from what supposedly they moved out here to enjoy? I will be looking into that. So, please, please think hard when deciding this, it's important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next two say they're opposed, but not if they want to speak, so if you want to speak, come on down. And Pam, I'm not going to even pretend to do your last name, so, all right. Says S... No, nope. See, you're already shaking your head, no, so it begins with an S.
Chepenetz.
Chepenetz, okay. Thank you. So Pam, I'm going to put down that you'd like to speak, so the floor is yours. Name and town of residence, please.
Yes, sir. My name's Pam Chepenetz, and I am the trustee for two residents on 141st Place. So, our backyards look into the front of the Hare property. And I'd just like to say that I sat through annexation meetings for months when Gilbert wanted to annex our property. And every one of those council members told us that we would be able to keep our lifestyle. At that time, minimum lot size was an acre and a quarter, and you could have an up-to-800-foot mother-in-law suite. Imagine my surprise when I find out not only can you put in a secondary residence, but you can use it as a rental property, and that still allows the Hares to put in a mother-in-law suite per your ordinances. So, the, my, my fear is that there will be additional adjustments that will allow downline the Hares to split that property and compromise the integrity of our acreage property. The other thing I'm concerned about is their statement that they're building an eight-foot block wall, which will help keep the animal debris odor away from their property. Every property out there has some form of livestock, has since they moved in. And now, Mr. Hare himself came up here and was talking negatively about the impact of the animals in the neighborhood. If they didn't like the lifestyle, they never should have moved into the area. And now, to use it as a talking point for getting their approval is very disconcerting to all of us who have been out there. I've lived on 141st for 31 years, and I've lived in Gilbert for 35. I've watched a lot of changes, not real happy with a lot of them, but I've watched them and I've put up with it. I don't think it's fair to compromise the integrity of the entire neighborhood. And his comments about nine outbuildings, yes, there's barns, yes, there's workshops, but there are no secondary residences full-time, like a 5,000-square-foot home going up. And if you don't think that'll have impact downline to the adjoining properties because of their inability to market their homes successfully because of the excessive building on that lot, and if they do turn around and put a mother-in-law suite up, that's going to compromise it even more. We have to worry enough about our livestock with neighbors and everything else, and be careful with them. And now, to have older people in the neighborhood who obviously have a disdain is going to put all of us a little more on edge.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Greg Thompson, you marked that you're opposed, would you like to speak? Here, come on down, name and town of residence, please.
My name is Greg Thompson, I live at 641 East Del Rio. I'd just like to say that I'm in total agreement with what the last speaker just said.
Mr. Dawson, your wife is on here to speak. Are you speaking on her behalf, or Mrs. Dawson, would you like to come down as well? Yeah, come on down and, and name, town of residence, and, yeah, thank you.
You got it, thank you. Cass Cassandra Dawson, and I'm Gilbert, Arizona, property just to the east. And I'll go through, I've got it typed, pretty simple for you, but please follow along with me, I'll go as quickly as I can. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Although I understand that the Hares have met several of the requirements that cannot be disputed, it should not just be a meeting, written, it should not just be meeting written requirements. There is also a human factor to be considered, and I appreciate being able to bring those to light regarding the erecting of another large residential building on just over an acre of land. There are a few questions that we have regarding several points that have been stated in their application. Mr. Hare states that in his general plan, that he would like to construct a secondary dwelling on his existing property for his elderly parents to occupy full-time. We too would want to have our parents close if they were aging and unable to take care of daily personal or household needs. However, total covered, including what they're living in in the basement, 5,632-square-foot home with stairs, would be a burden on an elderly person, not an asset, and makes us question the true motive for building a secondary dwelling. In regards to his response on Policy 5.3, encourage projects to protect the privacy of adjacent, single-family residents using the effective placement of landscape buffers, screenings, shielded light fixtures, and other mitigation measures. Mr. Hare responds that he will replace existing, very, very old chicken fencey with attractive block, excuse me, block. He feels that this will have a much more attractive area to view out his neighbor's windows and will cut down the animal debris odors and hopefully scorpions. To clarify, we had a beautiful view out our window, and then it was obstructed with his 1,600-square-foot RV work garage, which was built with minimum property setbacks. With the building of another home on the second half of this property, we fail to see how he is enhancing our view out our window. Through the correspondence, it states several times that the project will be on 1.3-acre subject site. What is factual is it is 1.25 acres. This includes the 20-foot easement that was granted, that was given to us when the vacant property was there for us to use as a driveway to get to our homes. The floor plan and elevation is that of a single-level, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half home that was submitted. It does not represent what he has stated in his written request. There is no basement nor stairs on the submitted plans. We do not understand with the validity and trusting what he is asking for such, when such oversight has been made. Our greatest concern was our statement regarding devalue of property. The canned response that neighboring properties are similarly zoned to SF43 and may be developed as accessory structures, guest quarters, and secondary dwellings per IDC standard, we will not debate. It concludes there is no evidence to provide that the proposed secondary dwelling will devalue neighboring properties. There is nothing that it can be compared to considering all that Mr. Hare has done on his property and intends to do. However, in regards to devaluing of property, having been raised in a family business is real estate, this is a valid concern. To say that it will not devalue the neighboring properties is incorrect and this greatly affects the value of the surrounding homes. Am I okay to finish?
You are, go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that. People move out here to be removed from small lots and crowding neighbors. Having not only an RV work garage and now a home with large square footage on the back half of his lot will deter potential buyers who are looking for room from surrounding neighbors. Lastly, in regards to respecting the character of land use areas designated for large lot development that accommodates a semi-rural lifestyle. Although the proposed project conforms, this truly is an opinion statement, and there is no true measuring tool that council can use and should take into consideration the human factor. Mr. Hare not only purchased a home that totals over 4,000 square foot, a storage building, a pool, and a cabana on the property, he has since added a 1,600-square-foot RV work garage at the back of his property. Now, he wants to place a 5,632-square-foot secondary dwelling near his work garage. I do not understand how he nor his parents are respecting the character of the land use areas designated for a large lot that accommodates a semi-rural lifestyle. The areas consist of one to one-plus acres that have a single-family residence, not multi. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dawson. All right. Those are all the call, all the yellow sheets that I have. Is there anyone else that did not get a chance to turn their yellow sheet and would like to speak? Is there, is there one more? No? Okay, all right. Mr. Dawson, if you want to come back up? And you are welcome to respond to any points raised after your initial comments, please.
Wow. I, I think this is on, everybody can hear me, correct?
Yep.
Let me just clarify a couple things. Jason, if you came over to my home, it must have been when I wasn't there. I'm retired, I sit on my butt a lot and I watch a lot of old westerns, and I'm pretty much home all the time. And I don't know when you ever came over, because I would have liked to talk to you about this. Well, it must have been when I was home.
What we're going to do is I'm going to ask you to address the council and not the audience.
Very well.
Appreciate that, thank you.
As I was saying, I must not have been home, because I am retired and I spend a lot of time at home now. Mr. Hare made a statement that I had said that he was going to have wild parties and be dealing drugs, that's not the case at all. They seem like very good people, and that's not what I'm referring to. It still doesn't come to the fact that what are they going to do if they have to sell the home or the property? That this can lead to those kind of things. I'm not insinuating at all that they are going to do that. Excuse me, just a minute. Talking about a conspiracy, I mean, that's a new one on me, and whoever did it, I don't know who that is. And my father has been deceased for 25 years, I don't know where he's getting that he spoke or my father, that, I'm beyond that. The bottom line is, we value what we have on our properties, just like everybody who come up here and said their piece, this is what we value. We just don't like the fact that somebody's going to come in and try to build two homes on one-acre lots that are single-family. It's not multifamily homes. We're not trying to make life hell for them, but these are the things that we are concerned about, and again, we don't want that happening, because it could happen with other people and they want to start doing the same thing, and then the neighborhood does go down. It's just a fact, that's the way it is. I thank you for listening to me. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. This time I'll ask the staff to come back up. Is there any questions at this point for staff? Commissioner Ayler?
So, there was a statement, and I guess I need some clarification. Is there any secondary homes, nine secondary homes in this vicinity?
I would have to check, I don't know off the top of my head. I know there are secondary dwelling units throughout the city, but I don't know within this vicinity on this corner of Lindsay and Ray.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner?
Stephanie, is there any CCNRs or anything based in this community?
This community, it doesn't, it's not part of a subdivision plat, and this area does not have HOA or CCNRs.
I live in a similar community. And I know there's a regulation on, and you may have mentioned this, but the size of the secondary building can't be bigger than the primary, is that correct? And that might be something that we need to ask. And does this meet that requirement? I don't remember, and my question boils down to, is it the footprint or is it the livable space that can't be larger?
So, currently, the code in the LDC does not have a maximum size requirement for a secondary dwelling, and it does not say anything about the size being limited to the principal dwelling. The only limitation is in 3B where the secondary dwelling constructed over a detached garage shall not exceed the height of a principal dwelling. So, in that sense, it also doesn't have a maximum height limit as well if it's not located with a detached garage.
Thank you. Other questions?
Can we go back to the grounds that were brought tonight?
I'm sorry, I couldn't...
For this hearing, the grounds for the hearing? Or the appeal? Do any of those grounds violate any town codes?
No, so, the grounds of number one is not a violation of town code. The proposed site plan is not required to be professionally surveyed as part of the administrative use permit, so it will be required during the building permit process. The devaluation of neighboring properties, there's not anything in the code under that. The property does allow to be rental. And the increased traffic on an easement, since that easement is privately owned by two properties, if there was any issues on that, that would be a civil matter between the property owners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Ayler?
So, the basis of that appeal is more for the use permit, not for town code purposes. So, there is a series of things you have to meet to get a use permit, and that's more what the appeal is about, not, not based upon town code.
Right, the, the basis of the appeal was more, it was not saying that the town code was not being followed, it was that, is not...
Not meaning the findings of fact.
Right, the findings of fact. I can step in, it says that it allows any person aggrieved by a decision to appeal, so that...
Right, I'm just stating the, you could appeal either, but the appeal is based, the findings of fact, not that it's against code.
Right, right.
Right.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay. Stephanie, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want this on any certain page for your discussion?
Site plan. Right there? Okay, so, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, I'm going to bring it up to the dais for discussion. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Ayler?
I guess I'll...
Yeah, get it started.
So, I, I can definitely see both sides of this one. I can see the idea of the wants for a secondary building, and that it's shown that it won't... This isn't about setting it up for a lot split and creating... because the, the property itself is not large enough to become two one-acre sites. And then I can see on the neighborhood side that this is a nice little pocket of rural area that what was all of Gilbert at one time before we started having more development and growth. And so they're trying to hold on to that single-family position on acre lots. So where, where I come into my rub on this is that this is a single-family lot and it's been described multiple times that there'll be two families. And even though they're one in the name, but there will be two households. And, and so it gets away from the single-family ideas and gets to two households and into the future, there will always be two households here. Renting or not renting, that's, you know, Airbnb or whatever ends up being into the world. That's into the future, but there'll always be two single-family households on this property if this gets developed. I also think that there is room for an addition, maybe not what's the most of the wants, but there is room. So I think that you can rearrange a house. It's been done multiple times. There's many design professionals out in our, in our community that could work with them. And there is a lot of movement that you can do and maybe not the exact want, but it's, it is still makes it in not needing a use permit. And that's where, that's where I kind of fall.
Thank you. Mr. Cavaney?
So, well, thank you, everybody, for your thoughts. I know this has been boiling over in your neighborhood probably for a while and I can appreciate how, how tough that is to have neighbors stressed. So hopefully, coming here tonight, you'll be able to walk away with some measure of, somebody's not going to be happy, but at least you'll be able to recognize that you, you voiced your opinion and you, you've stepped away with at least a resolve of some kind. So for a while, I had the opportunity to serve as the zoning hearing officer for the town and I had a chance to hear cases like this on a fairly regular basis. And I learned that it's, it's not very good ground to adjudicate these cases based on subjective understandings or intentions or perceived future use activities. I think the code is written with the intent to hopefully constrain inappropriate uses, albeit they're not perfect, I get it, but, but I think they're meant to try to constrain misuse and, and yet allow enjoyment of property owners to develop and utilize their properties as they like. And that may have some impacts when you're immediately adjacent to another neighbor. I get that. And although I'm sensitive to that, I think adjudication of these cases has to be by the objective rules and requirements that are afforded. And in this case, I don't see anything that the, the property owner, the applicant, is doing that is violating anything within the code. And I know everyone that surrounds this property wouldn't want to lose their opportunity to use their property as they see fit, as long as it falls within the code. So I, I have to say, I'm, I'm, I'm very grateful for those who've come to state their, their feelings and their, their opinions and their thoughts. But to me, this is pretty clear-cut that it needs to support the zoning administrator's decision.
Thank you. Other comments? Would encourage a few more if I could. Commissioner Bloomfield?
Not sure that I would love to wade into this, but, but I, I appreciated the opportunity to hear from members of the commission who have served as the zoning hearing officer for the town because I think that is where you would get experience dealing with these kinds of issues. And so I appreciated hearing from both of them, the previous and the current. And, and I, I can see both sides of the coin here as well. And there's a real, there's a real need to protect property rights. You have the ability, we all purchase property for the intent of what we bought it for and purchased it. And we're, we should be allowed to have that, however that is. But we should also allow everybody else to have those same rights, those same, that same ability to utilize it within the, within the code and, and being compliant with that. And I think that that's being done. It seems pretty clear that that's being done on, from the Hares. But at the same time, what they are doing is creating consternation to their neighbors. And in the effort to be a good neighbor, is there a way to resolve it? Is it possible to attach it to the house so that you don't have to have this administrative use? It appears like it could be. Not, maybe not with this exact home, but it appears that there's room to be able to do that. I don't think that I can go against what's been approved by the, by the administrative use permit, but at the same time, I would, I would exercise caution if I were the Hares, knowing that it has created this, this commotion in the neighborhood. Maybe it's not the best thing to do. Maybe it's better to find a different place to do it. But you're still within your rights to do it here. But you deal with the consequences of neighbors and, and whatever that, whatever that impact is. And, and it doesn't sound friendly. So just throwing that out there. But I, I think I err. I'm going to come down on the side of approving the administrative use permit.
Thank you, Commissioner Bloomfield. And you make a good point, Commissioner. We have, to my left and to my right are the zoning administrators for the town, zoning hearing officers, I'm sorry, for the town for probably the last four or five years. So it's interesting to hear both their sides of view on the concept. Anyone else like to make new comments? And I'll come, I'll come back to you, Commissioner Ayler in a minute.
Okay.
I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and voicing your opinions and your concerns. And I sympathize because I do live in a community like yours. And I do have intentions to someday add on to my house, either attached or detached, to take care of my elderly parents or aging parents and my wife's aging parents. It's going to be something that's going to be more common as days come because it's a growing population and it's something that we have to address on a regular basis. But I, I also sympathize that you're looking on to each other's backyard. You guys are in a tough neighborhood. You're having easements to greet properties behind. Luckily, I don't have that scenario where I live. Everybody's, you know, approached from the front road. But when I built our house over 20 years ago, we, I angled it so I had the best view possible, knowing that someday that might not happen, you know, that view might not be there. And sure enough, over the last 22 years, we've had large garages. You know, my neighbor to the north built a huge garage where my front door faces right at it. And that's just their use. It's their right. That's why you move into those neighborhoods. So you have the ability, and I don't need to tell you this, the ability to do what you want to do on your lots without a HOA breathing down your back, yelling at you that you'd have to take your garbage in. You can have your chickens, you can have your horses, you can have whatever you want. With like, like in my neighborhood, we can't have swine, but that's about it. And our, our neighborhood does respect each other in that aspect. It saddens me to hear that you're going to put an eight-foot wall around your property because that does not go into the intent of setting that up. But without those CCNRs, there's, you have that right. I, I would be devastated if they started blocking off our, our neighborhood in that, in that fashion. But again, like the other commissioners has mentioned, all these uses that you're putting in there is by right, by the codes, by the ordinances that's been set forth by the, you know, by the town. And we can only speak to those. Would I want to have a duplicate of my house right behind my, you know, my neighbor's house right behind their house? No. I, I agree. It's a, it's a single-family residence, but it is a single-family. Our, our family extends from one to another. But the respect of your neighbors, like you mentioned, that you, you need to look at and you need to work something through with them. I, I, I hate to see this kind of thing happen within our neighborhoods, but it, it happens in these larger neighborhoods because people hold these things dear to themselves. So it, it, it might be something, again, for you guys to reconsider on how you're laying this out instead of going, picking a plan from the book and like Commissioner Ayler mentioned, hire a professional to actually make your house fit into the neighborhood property and go forth. But again, we're, we can only speak to requirements that we're allowed to.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Ayler?
Well, I guess the other issue that I, I mentioned is that this isn't by right. This is by a use permit. And so this, they are asking not quite a deviation from the code, but they're asking why we put these in control to ask for, or a use permit is to show that you are fitting in the neighborhood. You are fitting in the idea of a single-family home. And that's the idea of a use permit is to have these types of controls so we would have these types of meetings. This one would be a administrative use permit, so it would be deal with, directly with staff. But, but it is not quite a by-right kind of use. I, I think it is a good use to have your entire family on a property, but this, to me, shows the, the need is, is more of a want than a need. And, and I think there's a lot of other ways, as other commissioners have mentioned, in working with the neighborhood to, to make what works for you, but still doesn't ask for this type of use permit for this kind of movement from what is, what is truly by right. And by right, you can have your entire family on your property and have an addition. You can have a 20,000-square-foot home. And, and that's where, where my, my issue is, is there is other options that doesn't need this use permit. So I don't see it as a by-right kind of issue.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment.
Well, thank you for everybody speaking tonight. I do appreciate that. In looking at this, we did look at Google Maps and there, there are several properties that have a secondary home. I don't know if they're the same size, hard to tell, as this one. So it's not inconsistent with the neighborhood. I do understand the concerns of the neighborhood and I, I do wish that maybe we could do a better job of, if, if, if most of the neighbors don't want the block wall, are there compromises? I'm not suggesting that you should do that or should have to. Their fairness goes both ways, but if there's ways to do things, maybe the size of the house. Maybe there's some things we could look at as a compromise for the neighbors. But as far as the meeting, none of the grounds were outside of code. Everything's within code and there hasn't been a precedent set. And I don't know that all those other neighbors that have a secondary house had to come before this commission. I don't know if that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right. So this is a tough one. And I know that the commission is going to deliberate in their minds right now as we get ready to make our motion. Yet, oh yeah. Yes, absolutely. Ask, well, who are you asking the question to? Staff or to me?
Up here.
Okay.
Up here. So I, I know there, just because I respect Commissioner Ayler and Commissioner Cavaney, I'm, I'm just trying to get better understanding as between the right and, and the, you know, the permitted issue here. Because there, there is a difference that I'm, I'm getting between the both of you and I, I look at it as a right thing. They have, they're well within their right, but then I want to make sure that, that's accurate or, you know, I just want a little clarification. And I don't want to start any debate up here. I'm just, this is for me.
That's fair. May I? So, so I think Commissioner Ayler was, he's focused on the use permit and that's fair because that's what this is, is a use permit case. I think the term by right is often associated with development rights. But here, it is a right of the zoning to use it for this purpose if you receive administrative approval, which they have. And it's being appealed here, so we are going to either ratify it or not. But, but they haven't violated any of the property zoning requirements. They haven't, they haven't broken any of the findings of fact. So with all that, it is, as long as they abide by that, it is a right to continue forward. Now, if they violate some of those, then they wouldn't have that right. They would be deviating from those and they couldn't do it. Am I, am I saying anything contradictory to what you're thinking?
I, I, no, I agree. The only thing that I would change a little bit is the findings of fact are based upon, well, no, it's based upon neighborhood-controlling dust, the, the, being a nuisance to the neighborhood.
And you put the findings of facts up.
But the findings of fact are not building or development facts. They are per a use permit and there is a findings of fact for the use permit that are different than building uses. So that's, that's where I would lean into.
Well, and many of those findings of fact, well, a few of them are, they have some subjectivity to them too, unfortunately. That's the challenge. So that's why we have the zoning administrators and us up here to help determine if, if those are violated, right?
I, I think that Commissioner Cavaney makes a great point here, right? The findings of fact are set such that interpretation can be brought in. Number four in and of itself is a complete interpretation. We heard from a handful of neighbors that feel like it would hurt their enjoyment of nearby properties and we've got some letters of support that it wouldn't. So there's the subjectivity. And that's why I think we're allowed to hear it, as we are this evening, to provide clarity on a direction on which we believe, based on the information that we've received previously and in this information in the packet from staff, how they fall. So I, I would agree, the facts of finding allow for some interpretation. And so kind of with that being said, is it's, it's, it is difficult. This is a difficult decision for, for us to make. We're going to affect families one way or another. And the appeal process from here will now get into legal ramifications, right? And so, right?
If they choose to.
If they choose to. Yeah. If they choose to. And so it's kind of one of these situations, when it comes to the town, the buck stops right here at the dais with this, with this commission. And I can tell you that over the years that I've sat on here, we've only had a handful and they're very difficult. They're very difficult. So I, I think that the commission has, has had opportunities to share. I think we have a feeling of where it fits with regards to the facts of finding. And I would open it up for a call for a motion. As we move to motion?
Chairman, before we do that.
Yes, sir.
Could I just make one point and just throw it out there?
Please.
And see if there's any, any validity to it. I agree that, that the administrative use permit was, was a, I think they did it exactly right. But I look at the findings of fact and you talked just barely about the subjectivity of it. And I look at number two, the intent of the neighborhood and the applicable area and the proposed use is conditioned will not unreasonably interfere with use and enjoyment of nearby properties. There's certainly gray area there. And while the other things are pretty black and white, they are allowed to do all of these things. This is where the gray area begins. And is there any validity to this? And I, maybe the best way to do it is to start with a, like you, like you started to, quest a motion and let us vote and see where we all stand and if it makes sense to move forward or have more discussion. I don't know.
Yes.
Because I could go either way, honestly, still.
So I, I think at some point that, yeah, the discussion, we have to, to be steadfast with the information we have, right? And then make a, make a vote, one way or another. And so, you know, I would say, Commissioner Bloomfield, these are the things that we get paid for up here. To make these, someone's got to make the tough, right? Someone, right. Someone's got to make the tough decisions and, and we're charged with making these tough decisions with the community. And unfortunately, I think the reason why we all feel the way that we feel is... And unfortunately, I think the reason why we all feel the way that we feel is some of Gilbert's core values is community, right? And we feel this decision because there's going to be some ramifications for this part of our community, one way or another. So I think that's the sum of the things. And Carl, maybe I'm way off basis, but I think these are some of the things that we're struggling with. So, yeah.
So let me make a recommendation. And obviously, not going to make a motion yet because I want to make sure that everyone has a chance to finish any final thoughts yet. But I recommend to this commission that, because, let me preface, I really liked what Commissioner Bloomfield said early on about, that we understand what the Hairs want to do. But, and I think others of you alluded to this as well, that maybe there's still room for some massage for what you're doing. And maybe there's an opportunity to have a backyard barbecue, and all get together and talk about it. What would help make this better for you? What would help? And here's what we really need as a family to make it work for us. What do you need as neighbors? And maybe still not ink in those floor plans yet, but let's maybe keep talking. But I think I would recommend to this commission that we uphold the zoning administrators' ruling, because I think there's plenty of justification to do that. But encourage the applicant, the appellant, the other neighbors to get together and still work together, come together, if at all possible, to make this pleasing, as pleasing as possible for everyone. So that's what I would encourage this group to do.
You know, and Commissioner, I would agree. I would agree. I think that's the way we're feeling. My hope would be that the Hairs hear that. And it's difficult, because there's some hurdles to be had. But we do that as a community. So my hope is that they can do that as well. I don't think we can mandate it, but there's a hope from this commission.
I agree with the idea. And the only thing that I would look at in trying to set that conversation to happen is to do a continuance, to allow that to happen. Might not change the, but it'll drive that conversation. So it might be a little taxing on the, well, not the applicant, but the first applicant, the Hairs.
Yeah, the Hairs.
So to really put some skin in the game to make it work. And that's, I'm just saying as a recommendation, not really as.
So there's a cup, there's, unfortunately, the public hearing's closed. But Vice Chair Ailer, I would say I'm not into going that direction, just because there is an opportunity, although be it expensive and illegal ease, to go from this point on. So I think I'm ready for a motion. So at this point, if we, we are either going to move to uphold the approval, or we're going to move to deny the approval. Is that correct? I'm looking at the town attorney. Yes. So I'll go ahead and call for a motion.
I'll do it. So Chairman, I move to uphold the zoning administrators' approval of AUP-18-08 and make the findings of fact for the Hairs' secondary dwelling.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Cavaney, a second by Commissioner Froelich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so the ayes have it, 5-2-2, with Commissioner Ailer.
I was a nay.
Yeah, Commissioner Ailer and Commissioner Johns voting nay. Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to item number 15, which is DR-18-48, Gilbert Family General Hospital. Amy, if you could just do a quick synopsis for us. I think the biggest part, we want to, yeah, make it quick, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I am known for my quick presentation. So here we go. We did see this at study session last month. It is a family hospital located at Market and Val Vista Drive. And it is the last parcel that would be developed within the site that you see right there on the screen. And this portion of the parcel is circled in blue. The other two hotels are under construction, or the other hotels are under construction. This will be a family general hospital with four rooms that allow for surgery, MRI, and other emergent and overnight stays for patients. We did see the overall site plan with the two hotels and the building proposed. It's over 15,000 square feet. And it does meet all code setback and parking requirements based on ordinance 2380, the design guidelines for Val Vista Square Main Street Commons, as well as the land development code. I'm going to go ahead and skip forward to the aesthetics of the building, because we did see this. And most of our discussion last time at study session did revolve around the aesthetics of the architecture. So they did alter some of the materials a little, added bronze as, a dark bronze as their metal accent color. This was the previous palette. It was a little more monochromatic. Now, as you can see, you'll see on the elevations, there's a little bit more contrast shown. Though the EPAS colors are the same EPAS colors, but they did remove the almond and metal and added bronze. So you can see from the elevations that you have a lot more contrast occurring with the bronze. The metal panels are here, over the window areas, in the dark. And then also, especially like, it's ACM panels. And then it's in the same color as the louvered panels up on the roof. So they're not exactly the same metal, but they are tied together visually. They also added a metal feature to the overall entry feature. That was part of the discussion, that the proportions of the entry feature were out of proportion with the rest of the building. The proportions have not been altered, but they did alter the materials on it. The other discussion that we were having a lot last month had to do with mechanical screening. They did elongate the mechanical screening and connect it to the north massing. And then lined it up a little more with the east-west, or the, well, the north massing, but it's on these elevations, you can see the mechanical up here above the north and south elevations. And then here is what you would see out on the east side, facing internal to the site. They did also add, and I'll point out, these angled window features that were not on the original. And I do have a copy of the previous plans that did have trees on them, but you can see that there's a lot more contrast occurring now. However, the entry feature is still fairly large and prominent for the building.
Amy, we didn't lose the trees, right?
No, the trees are still there.
Okay, okay.
But we took them off for visibility of the elevations.
Thank you.
No, the trees still exist. It is required under the development, the design guidelines. And then this is the new perspective of the building on Val Vista with the car that was racing down the road. And then this is the previous one with the car racing down the road. So, but you can see how there's a lot more visual articulation occurring by having the contrasting colors and materials. With that being said, any other comments or any questions I can answer for the planning commission? I'd be happy to do so.
Questions for staff?
Yeah. So, Amy, just real quick, the only thing, so I had a chance to see these in advance of the meeting, and I think much better, a lot better, right? We were a little concerned with the finishes. It also, it almost appears, and I haven't been able to compare it side by side, that they've maybe even changed the massing. It doesn't feel as top-heavy as it did last year. Maybe it's just the finishes, the difference in finishes. I don't know. But I think it has definitely improved. The only thing that I would recommend, and I did convey this as I reviewed the exterior elevation, is that, given its location, I think it has prominent views from not only the west elevation, but also north and south because of the Val Vista traffic. And it's right up against the road. That the only thing that strikes me as a little bit weak still is that north elevation. Now, I realize it's the back for them. That is the back of the facility and may have, I don't know, storage closet. I haven't looked at the floor plan tightly to know what's back there. But I think in this view, the black scorelines in the EPAS appear articulating. And yet in real life, we all know that EPAS scorelines are almost invisible from a distance. And so it's going to appear to be a very bland, white wall around that whole back with no visual interest at all, no windows, no stone, no metals, no anything. So I would recommend that we encourage a little bit, they've done great on the rest of the building, articulated it well, the fit and finish is good, offsets are good, vertical variation is good. I just think that elevation needs a little bit of material interest to, because of its prominence. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for staff? Commissioner?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Cavaney on the north side on the same thing, and we don't need to cover that part. The other part was the generator wall. Did they integrate that into the design of this building?
The generator wall is being constructed out of the same CMU that the trash facility and other walls on the site are being constructed of.
So, but, well, that was the difference. The walls around the site were different than the wall, the building, so.
Correct. It's not, it's a trend with stone, but the stone is not on the building. The stone is for site improvement throughout.
Okay. So we're going to have an eight-foot wall? How tall is the wall on?
The generator is actually a 12-foot generator wall, because it has to cover the generator.
Right. No, that's where I'm getting to. It's going to be a very tall wall, and we didn't see anything in the packet on the wall. I just want to make sure it's not just a block wall, that's this big cube hanging out there.
It is a trend with stone material, which is in your packet. It is the goldstone. It is a CMU. It is, there is no additional articulation on it. It is a box, a square. And it is in your packet under site details.
The elevations of those walls?
Correct.
Maybe I assumed that.
It is 27 by 18, and it is predominantly just the CMU.
There's, that they could put, and I guess, and asking for staff, viewpoint of this, of putting some kind of break in that wall, not a break, but basically some kind of, some movement in the block, so it's not just this big, giant, one-block cube.
Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair, it really is a little bit of a subjective decision, because in one way, you want it to just blend in and let the landscape sort of take over and sort of tuck it away. And in another, it's like, well, it is there, so should I articulate it more? But then it draws more attention. And it is at the back of house, and it is consistent with the other walls. So, and it's right next to the trash enclosure, which is a good six-foot high. So there are other features nearby that kind of blend in with it, and it is well screened by trees. But no, we did not specifically ask them to articulate it in any other way.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, just because of the height of it is my, if this was a building, we would ask for it. And this gets to a height of a building almost. And it is front-facing to Market and pretty, it's probably far enough back from Val Vista that you really wouldn't see it. It could be hidden behind the building. But it would be pretty dominantly seen from Market. So.
So, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, we could condition some additional articulation on that generator building, if you would like, as well as add some requirements for the articulation on the north elevations, using, we could specify which material or which color we would like to articulate with.
All right. We're going to get through the rest of the public hearing first, and we'll come back to that one. Is the applicant here? And if they are, would they like to make a brief presentation? A name and city of business?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Jared Cox with CoAction Development Group from Chandler, Arizona.
I'm David Costello with CoAction Group. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us this evening.
Really brief, maybe just to add a little more information to Mrs. Tame's presentation. The color of that, of the generator block is actually being used on the building. It's the same block that's being used at the northwest corner of the building around the, it's our medical gas storage area that's attached to the building. So there's a little bit of continuity to that. But we would be open to some additional articulation or colors on that north face, that north elevation as well. We are trying to not, we don't want to draw too much attention to that north face of the building, because we don't want patients to inadvertently come to that location or those doors. And that's part of the reason why we have the tower feature on the north, excuse me, on the southwest corner of the building, really to draw attention to that entry location of the building. So I think that's all I really wanted to maybe point out and add to, Amy.
Want to engage, Josh?
Oh, wow. I just, I mean, I completely agree with your thought process. I just think that since, so visible, maybe not put any height into that corner, but break it up with some real color, or picking how you're, you know, just something else to, so you don't have this big, white wall on that corner.
That north face of the building, it is, because of the internal functional space, there aren't any, there isn't any glazing. We can't put any windows on that side of the building. So that's why we didn't continue the pattern that we had on the east and the west elevation of the building. Just kind of kept it, kept it separate from that north face. But again, we'd be open to adding some color to some of the, breaking up that EPAS color, if that's what the commission would prefer.
Yeah, I think it's a narrow enough elevation. You know, a few strips of stone or metal to kind of match what you've got, I think you're great. I understand how you can't put glazing in certain areas. I get that. So maybe just a little bit of those other materials. Be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on item number 15, DR-18-48? Being none. I'll go ahead and, you guys have anything additional you'd like to add? Or are you, are you guys good? Okay. Is there any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Ailer?
Well, it's just more of a protocol question. So do we, in kind of going to these steps and making a motion, do we stipulate into that? Or just make the motion, and we can, staff can work with the applicant?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, we are most certainly able to work with the applicant. I would like to maybe point at this section of the building, where you see that windows were not used to articulate, and the metal panels were brought down. And that could very easily be applied to north elevation, I think, to meet what the discussion is, the intent. And then as far as the CMU generator building, maybe if we can wrap the corners with a feature that, whether it's EPAS, or whether it's continuing some of the metal to tie the two buildings together a little more, might be a good idea. If you're in agreement with that, we could condition those ideas.
I like that, actually. I think we should condition that, so as we move forward.
And if I could just add for Commissioner Cavaney, we have recognized that the scoring in the EPAS is very difficult to see from the major arteries. And our building department has started requesting that applicants who are using it for decorative purposes do at least three-quarters to an inch deep. Then we found that from the street, you do, your eye does pick up on that line. Anything less than that, the half-inch, you just don't read. And so that is a common request that has been made. And I did note it in the staff report.
Wonderful. Thanks, Amy.
Certainly.
All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it up to the dais for discussion. I think it's more protocol. Do you feel like we have it in the notes in the minutes to address the comments from Commissioner Ailer?
We could make the motion, subject to the conditions that Amy summarized.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Commissioner Cavaney?
Okay, Chairman, I move to approve DR-18-48 for the Gilbert Family General Hospital site plan, subject to the stipulations as Amy mentioned them from the podium.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Commissioner Cavaney, second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Going to say, as we move to administrative items, that, well done with my colleagues this evening. I'm very pleased to sit up here with you guys on that. So we're going to go ahead and move to planning commission administrative items. Catherine, to share comments before an action of this item. You're going to share about our, yep?
Thank you, Chairman Sipple and Commissioners. We did reach out to the commission members to let you know that we were going to have this updated schedule for the rest of the year to accommodate some of the major general plan amendment, additional public hearings that we'll need to hold, and also a joint meeting with the town council. I just wanted to clarify for the November regular meeting of the planning commission, that we're at, would like to hold that on Monday, November 5th. The Tuesday, the 6th, is actually election day. And then you'll have a second meeting that month on November 13th. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we hope that this... So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we hope that this calendar for the rest of the year will work well for you. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. I'll go ahead and move on to, do we need, we don't need to approve anything that's just an FYI, yeah. Planning commission minutes, consideration of approval for the July 11th meeting. Is there a motion? Someone that was here?
Chairman, I move to approve the minutes from the July meeting.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Cavaney. Is there a second?
I second.
Commissioner Bloomfield? Who did that? Oh, Commissioner Banda, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm just abstaining, since I wasn't here.
Me as well.
Me as well. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Agenda Item 17 did say consider approval of the revised calendar. Thank you.
Yes, I'll go ahead and call for a motion for the approval of the revised calendar for the planning commission.
Chairman, I move that we approve the revised calendar.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Bloomfield. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Banda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Communications report from chairman or members of the commission. All I would say is, it's school time, so school's back in session, heads up, speed down, all that good stuff. And is there anyone else that has anything they'd like to add? Okay, we'll move on to our council liaison.
Hey, that's me. Yes, as you said, Chairman, as of tomorrow morning, I think all of our three school districts in Gilbert will be back in school. Chandler and Higley have been in for about two weeks, and Gilbert goes back tomorrow. I attended their convocation yesterday. It was amazing to watch Mr. Shane McCord give his first convocation for Gilbert Public Schools. Quite a different feel there this year, with him at the, in the lead of that school district. On August 28th, we will have election day here in Gilbert. Early ballots started mailing out today, so please, when you receive those, which the majority of voters in Gilbert do, fill them out and send them back right away. Don't hold on to them. At 8:00 PM on August 28th, those are the first votes that will come out from Maricopa County, so it would be great to get those back right away. If not, you can return them to your polling place on election day. But I think we all pretty much fill them out, and we just forget to stick them back in the mail to send them back. So let's get them returned early, so we get those results early that night. On a sad note, in Gilbert today, we lost a Gilbert firefighter, not in the line of duty. It was due to an illness, very short illness, but he's very, been a very longtime member of our fire department, Battalion Chief James Nelson, and the team here at Gilbert amazes me more every day. I was looking at my Facebook feed, and I saw a Gilbert Fire logo come up with a thin red line through it, and it, and it's not just on firefighters' pages, it's on town staff pages, and it's on police officers' pages, because here in Gilbert, we really do work together as one team, and I think it's very evident when sad things like this happen in our community. So I wanted to share that with you, because that news will be, I'm sure, being seen by everybody on social media over the next few days, as we remember Battalion Chief Nelson. Thank you.
Thank you. A report from our planning service manager on current events.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. I do want to certainly thank you for your service this evening, and all your thoughtful comments and on these difficult decisions, and we do appreciate you making some adjustments on our calendar for the rest of the year, so thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and adjourn our regular meeting, and are you guys good jumping right back in? Yeah. Oh, there's wait, there's. Didn't. Stephanie and Amy didn't either. So we'll go ahead and move to item number four, which is Z 18-08, Gateway Area Standards and Streetscape Guidelines. This is a citizen review and a ni-